Council Bluff Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Welcome everybody, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And on a non-agenda item, since I was supposed to ask Melissa to explain the shirts at the end of the meeting last time, and did not, I'm gonna get it out of the way up front and just in case I do it two times in a row, so.
Thanks. We just thought we would give a quick explanation in case anyone is curious why we've all been wearing t-shirts this month. It's breast cancer awareness month, so we started doing this, I think about four years ago, where the council will help support that awareness within the community by wearing pink shirts for the month of October. It started out with the fire department doing shirts that they would sell, and then now Jenny Edmondson and the police department both have shirts. It goes to the Jenny Edmondson Breast Health Center, or to Mercy Oncology, which is now CHI?
CHI, yeah.
CHI. So all of our shirts go to represent breast cancer awareness and help with the cure and help those that need help with funding. So that's the shirts in both the police department, and I'm sure Jenny Edmondson still have shirts for sale if anybody has interested in purchasing them.
The pink shirt is Jen- the fire and the gray shirt is police, is that right?
The pink shirt is just Jenny, and the gray shirts are the police department and sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And kudos to our first responders for supporting those worthy causes, and we gotcha.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Tonight, we have four public hearings. If you're here in regards to those public hearings, you please step to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You have up to 10 minutes to express your ideas, and we welcome that. So this is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-281, determining an area of the city to be blighted, a blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such an area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city. Designating such areas appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Three to the Playland Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here who would wish to speak against the urban renewal plan for Playland? Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's?
Is this for a new?
No. That's 7A. That's okay.
Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is a topic of discussion. We received an excellent presentation on this during the study session. And what we are considering here is amendment to the Urban Revitalization Plan. And that plan was not originally attached to the packet. So folks at home may not have access to that. I think it was attached to the packet for the meeting two weeks ago. What caught my attention on this is the plan envisions a potential investment of up to $30 million from the city. And I recognize that the idea of encouraging investment is that you hope to get a return on that investment. And it's certainly the hope and the desire that we will get that return of investment. At the same time, we are looking at a number of other sizable investments in this city. We have tens of millions of dollars being put into levy management or levy repair. We have an investment, we discussed at the study session, of about $20 million going into revitalization of West Broadway corridor. We've yet to make a decision on the mid-city corridor, which certainly is a blighted area. Now, why do we use terms like blighted area and a menace to the public as reflected in the resolution? Well, it's because we have to come up with language in order to qualify for certain types of programs because the state laws pertaining to taxation of businesses are pretty much out of whack compared to Nebraska. So we ask, why is this area blighted and a menace to the public when it's located right next to a very nice Tom Hanifin Park that just got a big engineering award for how well that area has succeeded? It's adjacent to a residential neighborhood that is a nice, quiet little neighborhood. And this vacant lot is blighted and a menace to the public, according to the resolution. I understand all that, and I understand the need to bring more development into the city. But at a time when we are making these investments into other types of desperately needed projects that the city needs to move forward on to improve conditions for everybody in the city, I have deep concerns about whether or not now is the time to begin to commit to this size of project. Because with this one project, we are laying the foundation that will expand the city's debt load potentially by 50% for just one project. And while there may be payoff for this, and it may well be in the best interest of the city to do this, we can't say that with certainty. We're going to consider another project tonight involving some industrial capacity down off South 24th Street. And we do have a dedicated company that's going to come in, and we can map out the timeline for when the city will recover its financial commitment to that program.
Can I interject here, please, for clarification, Mr. Mayor or Dick Wade? I believe this resolution is adding a small piece of land to the urban renewal area. Am I correct? Because Mr. Ringenberg seems to be talking about a completely separate agenda item. Or I may be confused, so if someone could please clarify, that would be great.
It's add a section of ground on the eastern part of the Playland undeveloped area.
This urban renewal plan is already in place and has been for years. This is an amendment adding a portion of land, and it's not committing, it's not committing any funds. It's saying there's potential, if this were to be developed, that the city investment could go that high. But that would be also with the understanding that there's developers building and that there's properties going on the tax rolls, and all of that would come back to the council with each thing that was being done down there. So this is just adding a parcel of land to an existing urban renewal district.
If I could finish before Republic begins, I kind of appreciate it. But the resolution that we have before us that we're being asked to vote upon uses these words, and the plan lays out the numbers for the value of the financial commitment that we may be asked to make at a later point in time. And this will all be done kind of on a piecemeal basis, but we are setting, we are setting the foundation in place to do precisely what I'm talking about doing on something that's going to take a very large amount of taxpayer money.
It's gonna take, well, it's gonna take no current taxpayer money. It's gonna take taxpayer money that would be new, which is the TIF program, Tax Increment Financing that doesn't exist today, and without this project would never exist. And so it's a little misleading to say it's taking taxpayer money. It's taking potentially future taxpaying entities and rebating back the incremental increase that they bring with some saveback that then helps alleviate property taxes for current property taxes.
Correct. We are providing a tax benefit here because, once again, our property tax laws are out of whack, and so we're providing a benefit to a number of business entities that aren't, are not otherwise available to all the small businesses down on West Broadway or other parts of the city that also need some help.
And there is a West Broadway TIF, and so if you're a business and you increase the value of your property on West Broadway, you are able to get TIF dollars for doing that.
And the reason I ask for clarification is that down in the front row that wanted to, I believe, speak to the plan that we'll be talking about in 7A, that for right now, our action is adding a little chunk of land to the urban renewal district that already exists, so.
Well, I'm not-
I didn't mean to cut you off, but 7A, I believe, is what you are referring to.
Yeah, and that's not what I'm talking to. That's a whole different thing. We were talking about the urban revitalization district here. So I just want to be clear here that we are making, we're beginning to make a substantial commitment here in finances at a time when we have a lot of other commitments outstanding. And what we want to be careful of is making sure that we're going to be able to have a return of investment over time. And we have that with the second project, that we're going to consider that. But tonight, at the study session earlier this afternoon, I heard lots of words about shared risk and uncertainty. And when we are dealing with other financial commitments that this city has to consider, I'm not sure that now is the best time to be taking on those sorts of risks on behalf of the full community, so that's why I'm concerned.
I'd just like to clarify that this plan is already in place. That foundation has already been set. And if this motion were not passed tonight, it wouldn't change that. That commitment was made years ago. All this is doing is adding a parcel to that commitment that's already in place. Secondly, again, this is TIF money that would be used, so any of the commitments that the city's going to have for levies or anything else, this would have no bearing on, because the TIF monies would be used to do that. So I just want to make sure nobody is being misled to believe that your taxpayer dollars are going to be used, because they won't be, and the commitment's already in place and wouldn't change if this motion didn't carry tonight, so.
So the debt load is not increasing?
No.
No.
Really?
No.
Is this in place right now?
Debt load is based on general obligation bonding and not TIF, so that they don't look at it as debt. Now, if general obligation bonds were used for the streets, and we haven't decided how we're going to pay for the streets and infrastructure yet, potentially, it could, but that's not the $30 million number.
Okay, then I must have apparently misinterpreted the state statute, which says that TIF obligations do count against the total debt load.
Does the TIF obligation increasing by adding this parcel to what's already on the books?
According to the staff package, if we move forward with the full project, it's going to increase by about 50%. That's assuming we move ahead with the full project.
Right, but this motion to add this parcel, to add this amendment, does that change what's already in place right now?
But the resolution that's before us says that we support that concept.
But that concept's already there. It's already been voted on, and this vote tonight wouldn't change what's already in place other than to add this parcel of land. Is that correct?
Well, but I'm being asked to support that sort of expansion of debt and spending potentially by the city. And, you know, I understand that that was done by prior city councils, but now it's upon me to decide whether or not I can support that at this point.
Oh, so if this didn't pass tonight, would that mean that the urban renewal district that's already in place, that already has that commitment, would go away?
I didn't say that.
No, but I'm asking that.
But what I said is, I'm being asked to support the concept and the language that's in the resolution. That's what the resolution says.
Well, I would like to call the question, so we can vote on this resolution to add a small parcel of land to the renewal district.
All right, questions have been called. Is there a second? Calling the question. Any discussion on that? All those who vote on calling the question, all those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
All right, and then to the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
All right. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-282, determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, and development or combination thereof of such is necessity in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the citizens or residents of the city. Designating such an area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the 24th Street Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests at this matter? Anyone who wishes to address the council against this? Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's plea?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
As I alluded to before, I think that this is a good example of a development project that's been put forward that's going to have a demonstrative level of investment into it and payoff so that what's needed to be done is adequately recovered. And my compliments for all the hard work that have gone into this, and I will support it.
I think it's just important for people to know what sensitively we're talking about. It's on Veterans Memorial Highway on the corner with South 24th Street. There is a publicly, yet not named, but a relatively large entity that's looking to perhaps doing a cold storage facility. We have a lot of manufacturing in our community and around it that makes a lot of frozen foods or freezes food for transport for manufacturer, further manufacturing to other products elsewhere. But not many places in those businesses to store what they make. So you can't make as many things in your building if you're having to store them there too. And you can only go so far away, logically speaking, I mean, common sense, before the food would be in a condition where it wasn't cold enough and you'd have some trouble with its safety. And this project, allowing this to go through, takes an area that otherwise would be, continue to be a cornfield. It has been, well, for a very long time. There's been nothing ever built on it that I'm aware of. It's, of course, in an area that's a floodplain area near. It will retain and probably increase a lot of jobs. And to me, it's a fantastic example of something we should support, and I do.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-283, approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for the North 28th Street Storm Sewer Rehab Phase One Project, fiscal year 15-11. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests at this matter? Anyone who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-284, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Mesquite Creek South Sewer Relocation Project, fiscal year 12-13C. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Excuse me. Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests at this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Again, seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clark?
Ordnance is on first reading, ordinance 6219. Amending ordinance numbers 5766, 5859, and 6037, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located with the amended Playland Park Urban Renewal Area in the city of Council Bluffs, county of Potawatomi, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Council Bluffs, county of Potawatomi, Council Bluffs Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Playland Park Urban Renewal Area, amendment number three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This is for those following at home and in the audience. This is tied to item number 4A that we just passed related to a small chunk of land that we're adding to the urban renewal plan.
I think it's also important to understand briefly what TIF is. Sometimes we throw the acronyms around and they can get really confusing. It's Tax Increment Financing. Basically, what it is, is you take what the area is currently paying in taxes, and since we're talking about a field with nothing on it that is owned by all of us as a city, it's, nothing's being paid on it. But if it were a piece of property paying something, it would still have to pay that amount, even if it got what's called TIF, which is if you build something on it, you agree to do so much to bring in development, that'll increase property taxes eventually, and probably increase jobs. For a certain period of time, usually up to about 10 years or so, the increase in the taxes for those years, you get back as a rebate, as an incentive, to build an area where otherwise people might not. There might be, in this case, it's the soil, the area, the history of nothing being built there that made any money. What that does is it gives an incentive for people, so it's that extra money that we wouldn't have made anyway for a short period of time to give that extra incentive so that people can afford to come in there and do it and still make a profit. Otherwise, why would anyone do it? And then, after that time, it's fully taxed. And so the debate on any of these issues, though, is in any given situation, is this, is this a plan where the value of the plan, or the anticipated of it, will it be enough to justify having done it? And that's what I think a lot of the dispute has been about tonight. And I think it's just important for people to understand what we're talking about. On this particular issue, I understand the concern of it could potentially increase to a large amount of TIF, but I think the area needs it. It is our front door of our community. And again, the developers that are doing this, who have done things such as Exarbit Village, which seems to be pretty successful. If this doesn't make money, they lose a lot of money. If this doesn't make money, the tax value hasn't increased, so the taxpayer still isn't paying for it. What this would give is it would give them the increase in value for a short period of time. They'd get it back as a rebate, so that they build something that otherwise, if you look at that area, nothing's been built, and I don't think anything will be without this. So I understand the concerns. Sometimes, certain projects, I'd agree, don't make sense, but on this one, I respectfully disagree and say that it does.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Ordnance 6220, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the South 24th Street Urban Renewal Area within the city of Council Bluffs, county of Potawatomi, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Council Bluffs, county of Potawatomi, Lewis Central Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the South 24th Street Urban Renewal Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordnance is on third reading, ordinance 6216, establishing the Gun School Urban Revitalization Area within the city of Council Bluffs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same-
He was waving his arm.
All right, I'm sorry.
Dave wanted to speak.
Oh, we moved too fast.
Thank you, I guess I shouldn't.
We moved too fast. We saw that arm waving.
Hold on. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Dave Christensen, 2735 North Broadway. Just as a little reminder, the rezoning of this property from R1 to R3 was done by the city council about a year ago. Over the objections of the neighborhood, your reasons for changing the zoning on that, basically, we're out of an abundance of concern for the taxpayers of Council Bluffs, and rightly so. Everything you do has to be looked at through the eyes of the taxpayers. Selden's proposal for the conversion of these buildings into apartments was very impressive, quite frankly, and we were, over the past year or so, we've kind of looked forward to something starting there. However, now, after asking the state taxpayers to help subsidize this renovation, he's now asking the city taxpayers to help subsidize this project. And I, for one, am really insulted by that, and I think all of the neighbors are too, and I think all of the city taxpayers should also be insulted by that. Out of the same concern for the taxpayers, I think you should turn him down on this one too. I know your concern that what happens if we don't grant him these tax, the tax abatement on the property, that he'll turn around and walk away from it. I wouldn't bet that he would do that. He's a pretty shrewd businessman, and he's going to get every dime he can out of this property. But if he does walk, I'd like to remind you to think back on the Cabana Swim Pool up on Spencer Avenue, which was given to the city about a year or so ago. I think, if I'm not mistaken, you used an Iowa West grant to demolish the pool and landscape the property and prepare it for single-family homes. If you've been by there recently, you'll see these two new homes going up at a pretty good clip. The homes are being built by the Iowa Western students that are in the construction field. And now, the Council Bluff School District has also discovered that they have a need for teaching their students how to build houses and other buildings. So in the paper a week or so ago, you saw some of the AL and TJ and other students joining the Iowa Western students on site, and they are really cranking these houses out. So that need in Council Bluffs still exists for the Council Bluff School District. And if Selden walks away from this, the zoning goes back to R1, and the Council Bluff School District is perfectly able to apply for the same type of grant to demolish the buildings and turn the property into buildable lots. So we in the neighborhood encourage you to vote against this proposal and let Selden pay his own way. He lives in Palm Springs, for crying out loud. If he can't afford property taxes in Council Bluffs, who can? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else that I missed? All right. Do we, we've got a motion and a second, and we're ready to vote.
If I may speak to that, there are just a couple of things- If, if I may speak to that, there are just a couple of things Dave raised, and, uh, on this issue, I know, he, he and I, it would be no surprise to him that he and I, uh, don't agree on this issue entirely. I think we do on the, the overall, but when it comes, comes to it on this vote, we don't agree. I think it's just important to remember that, that Selden last year asked for a particular kind, and I'm sorry off the top of my head, I forget, of, of state, uh, tax incentives. They didn't get it, they're very competitive, hard to get. This year, they've said they're going to try to go for that one again, as well as a different kind, I believe, a historic t- t- tax credit versus a disaster relief, if I've got that straight. If they get the one they want, it goes from forty-six units, which was what was approved originally, all the way down to thirty-six units, significantly decreasing the amount of traffic in the neighborhood, which safety was, was a major concern expressed by a lot of folks in the neighborhood and, and concerned me. This, this would basically mean they take off of the whole second story on the little bit they were gonna add to the existing structure. So it, it, far more compatible with the residential district and far less traffic. So, that was a major, uh, thing that the neighborhood wanted last year, and Selden appears to, uh, say that that's what they wanna do now. The other thing that's important to remember is the demolition costs of the Cabana Pool. I don't have the number in front of me, but it's at least ten, it might even be fifteen times. It's between those two figures, I believe, more to, to demolish Gunn than Cabana. Primarily, it's a much larger building, the air of the building, as I understand it, uh, significant asbestos and all sorts of costs that, uh, all of us as taxpayers, since we all pay school taxes too, or most in the city pay Council Bluff School tax, uh, would have to bear if they tore that down. So, I appreciate that there's some concern in that the idea of this, again, they, they're seeking this local tax. In other words, they want rebated back the increase in the value. It's not making any money right now because it's owned by a school district, which is a local government in Iowa technically, so it's not paying any tax right now, the rest of us are having to pay to keep that up. The increase, so nobody else has come there and decided to build. This'll cause it to happen, they'll get rebated back money that'll be collected that we wouldn't get anyway, if nothing happens. And right now, as I, as I go by it, I'm really concerned because you see a lot of windows being broken, you know, there's the window, broken window theory. Once one window breaks, several more break, and it's getting very scary, and it's, 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 it's not fair either to our police and firefighters because, especially as we get in the cold weather, you know, we just had that house on Ninth Avenue that burnt down, uh, burnt for the second time this year. It's not fair to have firefighters and policemen, uh, having to go in there and fight an area. It, it's just such a, such a nightmare scenario with no good that'll come from it, just letting it continue to sit there. So I, I, I guess on that, I just respectfully disagree, and though this wouldn't be my favorite option, I agree with you there, it's much better than doing nothing, is what I think.
Just to, uh, be clear, uh, the, the, the action that we're approving tonight is on the approval of the revitalization area and not the expenditure of, of public money to, uh, to subsidize the project, if you will. That's, that, that's another topic that will come on later, and, and as, uh, Councilman Watson, uh, indicated, we, uh, Selden has put together two simultaneous grant attempts, maybe if one doesn't work, the other one will. It, it's all somewhat speculative, and to me suggests that, that perhaps the, the project may, may never get built. Uh, this, this concern is just the revitalization, uh, area. And as I've said before, I, I wish that we would be more aggressive with these revitalization areas because there are a lot of businesses and homeowners that could benefit from, uh, from having such an area designation uh, for, for their neighborhoods, but, uh, but we're providing these for, for individual projects. So, to, to me, it's a, it's an opportunity missed, but, uh, we're just focusing upon that revitalization zone this evening.
Well, I just wanna briefly add that, um, you, you and I have discussed this a few times, and, um, while I wasn't really a big fan of the density in the, in the area, this is just, you know, designated an area so that they can, uh, attempt to get, it, it's not a guarantee that they're gonna be getting any taxes, as a matter of fact, the write-up, uh, specifically says, "may then be eligible." So, it's, uh, it's not the best answer, but I, I concur with, uh, Councilman Watson, with the, the lower number of units, um, that's a, uh, very thin silver lining.
Alright, my discussion's over, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Ordnance sixty-two seventeen, to amend chapter one point three-two, purchasing by amending sections one point three-two, point zero one zero through one point three-two, point zero nine zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Ordnance sixty-two eighteen, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point two-seven point zero two-zero B by rezoning property generally lying south of Avenue G between Curtis Street and North Sixth and Seventh Streets, north of Vicaded Avenue D, more particularly described below, from R-two, two-family residential district to R-three, low-density multifamily residential district, as defined in chapter fifteen point one zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution fourteen dash two-eight-five, adopting the Playland Park Master Plan Amendment Number Two and authorizing the mayor to proceed with actions necessary to cause private redevelopment thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I believe we have a short demonstration.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jay Noddo with companies, twenty-two eighty-five South Sixty-seventh Street in Exarban Village in Omaha. Pleased to be here once again today. We've enjoyed working with you and, um, your senior leadership team here within the city, as well as many of the community leaders and stakeholders throughout western Iowa and eastern Nebraska as we've worked on crafting this recommended master plan to you for the Playland Park area, also now known as River's Edge. What I'm going to do is work with my colleague Doug Basson from HDR and Bob Stratton from Broadmore Development Company. We're gonna kinda quickly go through the plan, um, and please stop us along the way with any questions, and I know you will. First image we have here is, uh, a view of what we believe the finished product will be a few years down the line. You're looking west, you're looking from the west to the east, over the river, and over Tom Hanifin Park, and the edge of the park is really right here today. Uh, and what you see are two condominium towers, um, two office buildings, and an associated parking structure, a major apartment complex, several different style living spaces to the north, this is Avenue A. Um, several different style living spaces to the north, which could be commonly referred to as townhomes or villas, different kinds of single-family homes. And then a little further to the east, a new entry into the area, which would be Fortieth, um, and it would be part of, will be part of, the reconfiguration of four-eighty, Broadway, and I-29 in the future. Um, and then along that edge, a series of smaller mixed-use buildings that could house combinations of service, retail, office, and residential spaces. We've, along the way, um, worked with this broader stakeholder group that I mentioned, um, which involved, I think, all of the senior department heads here, um, at the city, outside consultants, um, HDR, Sasaki, um, we've added, Noddo Companies has added to the mix, uh, the Keywood Companies, um, and all been working together through a series of design surets and other meetings, um, to arrive at this plan. And I think it's important, two really important points at, at this juncture are that, first, in, in well-thought-out urban mixed-use areas that are successful, we've had a chance to study aspirational peers around the country. Um, some close to home, as, as close as Exarban Village or the Old Market, others further away. But, uh, most times, we're looking at places that have built, been built in climates that are similar to ours. We all travel to great places and warm climates, and it's so neat to walk around and say, "Wow, couldn't we do this, or why can't we do that?" And then we have to all remember that, um, the weather's changing outside here in western Iowa. Um, and soon, very soon, um, certain things that are appealing in the southeast and southwest just don't work here so well. So, uh, just a fact. Even Bob Mutt in the Chamber of Commerce can't change that. So we, we think carefully about how pedestrian movements work, how buildings and projects are integrated with uses both horizontally and vertically, and try to, try to work from within. But make no mistake about it, if Hanifin Park wasn't where it is and what it is today, uh, we'd probably be having a much different conversation because one of the very essential elements to successful urban mixed-use redevelopment are great public spaces that are easily accessible, that are large enough to have two or three or four different things going on at a time, that are affordable, um, and, and flexible enough to, to adapt themselves to different kinds of uses. So we've developed a master plan, which is what you see in front of you. Um, and it's the same plan we went over earlier today, but for the audience, um, let me just say that now the river is to the left, so north is at the top, this is west, this is Hanifin Park. Here is, um, four-eighty, and today, there is an entrance into the area at Forty-first. This is the, uh, proposed entrance to the area in the future at Fortieth Street. And what this plan illustrates are the mix of uses that have been agreed upon to put into the site. The, the goal here is to create great, and to create great opportunities for the community for living spaces, to provide a selection of different kinds of living spaces, both leased or rented and owned. Um, so there's a mixture of condominiums, which would be owned, there's apartments, um, there's a possibility for, uh, more two-story townhome-style residences that could be owned or could be leased. There's more opportunities for, I would say, more traditional, single-family-type homes that could be developed with, using a variety of architectural styles. But these, along this edge, um, would be owned. Um, and then there's office space incorporated into the plan. So it's this mix of uses that makes for a twenty-four-seven environment. It's what, um, both young professionals and empty nesters are looking for. And candidly, um, it requires an awful lot of collaboration between the public and the private sectors. There are several different layers on, on both sides of the equation, if you will, but, um, where the magic really is, is when we turn the conference table round and we're all working together. Um, and it's important to recognize that, um, since there's been a lot of conversation of tax increment financing, I think it's important to recognize that when a project requests tax increment financing, what that tool is used for, and it's really a development tool, that's what it is. It's, it's intended to level the playing field between a proposed site and other alternatives in a broader marketplace. And realize that when a developer makes a request and then a, a commitment, um, to build a project using tax increment financing, that owner makes the commitment to be responsible for taxes, for the real estate taxes. So, yes, the city or the regulating authority has to do their part, but, um, at the end of the day, the property owners gotta pay their taxes, and that's no different than any other property owner. Um, the difference with these taxes is that these are new taxes. This is tax revenue that didn't exist before the project, and but for tax increment financing, the project couldn't move forward. So, all the different developers that will work here will all have different uses, and their projects will be a little bit different, but everybody will be required to m- m- make the same commitments and fulfill the same kinds of obligations. So what I think what we'll do now is I'd like to turn this over to Doug Basson from HDR, and Doug's gonna quickly walk you some, through some of the organizational features of the project, and then we'll hear from Bob Stratton, and, and we'll come back for questions.
Thank you, Jay. Doug Basson, HDR, eighty-four oh four Indian Hills Drive, Omaha, six-eight one-one-four. Jay kinda gave you a big picture, uh, look at the details. What I wanna do now is begin to show some of the character, uh, of, of, of the site itself and what's planned. And basically, what we're looking at right now is the street-type diagram, and, and the goal with this is identifying, uh, the specifics of the individual streets. And, and in a nutshell, these streets are gonna be designed as places, not as just conduits for vehicles, but places when you walk out of your condo, your townhouse, or your apartment, they're great places, similar to the types of places that we see when we go on vacations to those sunny climates Jay talked about. Probably the, the defining feature in this is Avenue A, which is this dark street, uh, that moves from east to west. And this has the potential to become probably one of the most unique and special streets in the entire metro area. Um, it's designed to accommodate not just vehicles, uh, but bicyclists and pedestrians, all equally. Um, and we'll get into some details of that, uh, on this next slide. Uh, this is what we call a section in a plan, begins to show that cross-section of the street. So you'll notice that it has two lanes of traffic, one in each direction, on-street parking on each side. But then on the south side, you'll notice this pink area, that is what we call a cycle track, and that's a designated bicycle lane, uh, that's separated from vehicular traffic. Uh, it's wide enough, uh, to accommodate bicycle, uh, um, basically bidirectional in each direction. And the significance of this is, this links up directly, uh, with the regional trail system along the riverfront, and this pulls those bicycle riders into the site and ultimately provides a great connection, uh, south of the interstate and ultimately to the West Broadway, uh, or Avenue A corridor. So this is really a defining feature that helps, uh, get that cycle, uh, traffic into the site and into the city as a whole. And then next to that, to the southeast tan area, that's what we're calling the pedestrian promenade. Uh, and again, this is a very wide, highly detailed-designed pedestrian, uh, sidewalk uh, that will basically be lined by, uh, retail-type uses along the apartments, uh, and, and really be an active-type space. So taken as a whole, between the vehicle traffic, the bicyclists, and the pedestrians, this is really gonna be a grand street, something that's truly unique, um, in the entire metro area, and probably in the two-by-state region. We have other streets that we'll just kinda go through, and, and the, the, what I'm trying to portray here is they're all specifically designed to be the, the place that I mentioned earlier, truly unique locations. Um, and then ultimately, the piazza, the piazza is on the very west end of Avenue A, uh, that promenade. And this is gonna be, once again, another special, uh, place. Jay talked, uh, a lot about River's Edge Park and the ability to program this. This allows us to begin to take the programming of that space into the River's Edge site. Uh, it's gonna be designed as really a curbless street, so that it accommodates, uh, both vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians equally, none at the expense of the other. Um, and it's anticipated that it'll be able to be closed off during events, um, so that you can bring street fairs and, and other types of, uh, festivals and that sort of thing into that space to really kind of expand, uh, the riverfront park, uh, and pull that into this location. That design is currently, uh, being thought about, um, and it will go under, uh, Design Advancement over the course of the next several months, uh, with Sasaki, uh, playing a major part in that. Uh, so with that, that's kinda the key features of that, but again, you can see, uh, that main spine corridor and how both Fortieth Street and Forty-first ultimately tie into that and, uh, create a place for the citizens of Council Bluffs to get to the riverfront, really opening up that opportunity. The other thing I wanna talk about is parking, there will be that on-street parking on not just Avenue A, but also all the other streets. Once again, so that for activities, uh, and, and programmed uses in the park, uh, there'll be significantly, uh, more parking spaces than currently exist. With that, I'll turn it back to Jay, uh...
Can you also mention regarding parking, 'cause that's an issue in our community, that the office building, the, the parking would be made available to the public after, could you touch on that just briefly?
Um, if you look at this location right here, this gray, that is a parking structure, and that's gonna be designed to accommodate, uh, the office tenant uses on those two buildings, uh, but the nice thing- But the nice thing is, there's a shared use concept that, you know, as office uses die down towards the end of the day, and on weekends, that opens up that parking structure for all the activities and uses within the riverfront. So, it's a really nice opportunity to expand that parking availability.
Thanks, Doug. So, when we started this journey a couple of years ago, we did so on a volunteer basis. And the reason we wanted to do that was to see if we couldn't collectively develop a vision and a strategy to implement that vision that would result in a real winner. A winner for Council Bluffs and for Western Iowa, and a winner for the entire metropolitan area. Part of the secret to success, I guess, that we've been involved in in the past, is approaching things that way and working with potential teammates early in the process. I mentioned to HDR and Kiwit earlier, certainly the great work that Sasaki has done, the push and other things that Iowa West provides is always very helpful. But one of the biggest and best gauges of whether we're on track or not is to reach out to others in the development community. And what we've found over the years when we've done that is, there is some power in numbers. And so, we try to test what we're thinking with some of our peers. Sometimes, they are competitors, folks that build the same product type that we like to focus on. And oftentimes, they are groups that build other uses that are essential to work in harmony with some of the things we do. And I also want to mention, then, when we started this, we didn't know if there was going to be a long-term role for nautical companies. We thought, well, let's get into this, let's see if we can't put a team together and develop a plan and see what that plan suggests are the best uses. It could have been, and it's happened before, it could have been, we put a great plan together with a strategy that everybody felt comfortable with, ultimately approved, and there was none of our product type in that plan. But you know what? At the end of the day, that was a pretty successful effort. Here, we believe there's a great opportunity for the community. We think there's a nice opportunity for ourselves. We've reached out to Broadmoor Development Company, who's based in Omaha and very, very accomplished with multifamily-style projects throughout the region. And the two firms are ready, willing, and able to make a commitment to begin development, begin the planning for the development and construction of our respective parts of this project. So, with that, I'd like to turn this over to Bob Stratton for a moment, and he can talk about, he and his colleagues at Broadmoor's thoughts about where we are.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bob Stratton, Broadmoor Development Company, 809 North 96th, Omaha. 1987, we turned our first shovel at River Park Apartments on the south side of 480. And over the years, we've been fortunate enough and lucky enough to work with the city, and we now have over 350 apartment homes at River Park. And in the past, we worked with Don Gross and his team at the city, and we're happy to still be a part of the process. We've always liked River Park, we've always liked Playland Park, and we probably like it more today than we did before. The combination between HDR, Doug Bassan, and the nautical companies, Jay and his team, and Don Gross and the rest of his team at the city have really put together probably a better version of where we were before. It's a live-work environment at the foot of Tom Hannafin Park, which really creates what we think is a beautiful front door as you come into the city of Council Bluffs and tying the metro together with the trail system and the Bob Carey Bridge. We're happy to be here. We're still walking down the aisle. We know all the ideas haven't been said, but we're happy to be a part of the process, glad to be here.
Okay. Any questions?
With respect to the office buildings, again, I just want some clarification. We talked about the number of office personnel. We would expect these two structures to house, if you will. Could you give me those numbers?
Sure. As you know, there's two buildings contemplated, a north building and a south building. The north building will be approximately 50,000 square feet, and the south building can be anywhere from 75,000 to 150,000 square feet. In the industry, what is standard today is an office population of one person for every 200 to 250 square feet. So, said differently, four or five people per thousand square feet. We don't see anything less than 125,000 square feet between the two buildings. So, if we're at four per thousand, which is the low end of the standards these days, that's 500 employees. If the south building reaches its kind of maximum density, that takes us up to 200,000 square feet. And at that size, we would estimate a range of 800 to 1,000 jobs. And it really just depends on the employer and the industry they are a part of and so forth. But I think those are very conservative and very reasonable numbers.
On the residential side, we discussed this afternoon, the potential for about 500 people, some shifting from within our community, and many hopefully coming from outside the community to live here in Council Bluffs.
Yes, there's around 350 individual residences in all the different property types, and the industry standard is about one and a half people per residence. So, it gets us close to 500, a little over, actually. Other questions?
I guess I just have a statement. I'm going to repeat what I said this afternoon, but the plan, it's a well-thought-out plan. It's something that, as I mentioned today, I went into the archives in the closet in my home because I went to the very first design charrette back in 2006, when this was, we first started talking about this. And many of the elements of that plan in 2006 are in this plan, but this is better because between the meetings, I went home and I looked at it again, and there was, I don't know if you remember, Matt, a very large apartment building that was where your office towers are, but that was pre-Hannafin Park. So, we've got the benefit of that jewel of our city that's a great counterpoint to this more urban development. And I think it's a fantastic front door to the city of Council Bluffs and to the state of Iowa. And I thank you for the work and your efforts on this. I hope it's a success for you, for your partners, for the city, and ultimately for the residents. If I didn't love my backyard so much, I would want to live in the condo, but...
Never say never.
But I like my backyard.
Yeah. And I echo Lynn, I haven't been working on this as long as she has, but I remember about five years ago, when I first was getting, hopefully, elected to council, this was a big thing that I wanted to see with some development along the riverfront and really just improve our image from what people see to Omaha. So, I am extremely excited about this. You guys have done great work. The apartments we have right now are great, so I'm very hopeful this is going to turn out to be a great project and just a really great welcome to our community, something for everyone to see from Omaha. It will no longer be a bridge to nowhere, there'll be all this exciting opportunities.
Oh, no, the bridge to nowhere stopped. We've got Hannafin Park.
Hannafin Park. And we have even more, hopefully.
I would just like to point out, I got quite a few questions and comments on social media and in person. This plan, Tom Hannafin Rivers Edge Park, is a public park owned by all of us, the residents, it remains so. In fact, all of the access to the riverfront remains public. In fact, under this plan, the access, right now, it is very confusing. I'll admit, embarrassingly enough, that I get lost trying to find the park, and I have a fairly good idea where it is. It's just confusing, and it's not good for a lot of the side streets and the residents who live on them, I'm sure, either. And this actually, it brings back the interstate access, interstate access, an entire block so that you don't have to gun it when you're getting onto 480, excuse me. It just provides a much safer, broader pedestrian, bike, and car-friendly way to get to this area and the park. And, you know, the future is the best of the present and the past, and this really is Council Bluffs of 100, 150 years ago in many ways. It's the mixed use, it's the areas of retail on the first floor, apartments and condos above, single-family houses, some connected kind of what I'd call a brownstone, next to one another, single-family houses, a lot of fantastic uses that make it a place that isn't dead after 5:00 PM. It's just an exciting place to be. This is the future, and our townspeople deserve it. I know sometimes we can get jaded and think that we've got to keep doing things the same way we've always done them, even if something has worked very well many other places. This is, in many ways, 19th-century Council Bluffs in concept and is done in so many places. If you look around the country, indeed the world, it's so popular, it's particularly popular with young folks and retiring folks, it seems to be the most popular. We want to keep our people, we want to have nice things. This provides it, and I commend it.
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody who did work on this. I know there's been a lot of effort put in by a lot of people, including a lot of city staff and nautical company, and I thank you for your vision. It's really reflective of what I think our community would like to see as their front door. And I look forward to the families that will relocate there, and I'm not that committed to my backyard.
I'm surrounded by the forest, though.
Hindsight is a wonderful thing, and the 2007 plan called for a levee gate to allow direct access to the river. Now, if that plan had been executed and that gate would have been built, we now know today from our friends in the federal government that we would have probably had a catastrophic event in the last flood incident. So, we're making a number of assumptions about the future without being able to fully predict the future. And part of that problem is more immediate in that this access to 480 is still motional at this point. Iowa Department of Transportation has not formulated those plans as of today, so we're making an assumption. We're also making assumptions based upon the people that live in those neighborhoods just to the north about how this is going to impact their neighborhoods at the same time. And I totally respect the amount of work and thought that has gone into this particular project because it is a great urban environment that's being designed here. At the same time, when we're looking at office structures housing 1,000 personnel, that right now kind of begs the question, where are these 1,000 people going to come from? And we've been, I've received all sorts of private assurances that they will come, they will come, but at the end of the day, it kind of boils down to trust me, unlike the other projects that we approved, and the other project that we approved earlier tonight, that warehouse on 24th Street. So, with everything that the city is desiring to do and the other plans that need to be honed and we go forward with, I'm concerned about the timing on this and the diversion of, I'm just concerned about priorities at this point. So, again, I commend you for the excellent work.
And the vision doesn't stop there. You ain't seen nothing yet, have you? All right. Any discussions done?
Did you want to speak?
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. One of the deals I'm looking at is we're going to put, I call it a freetile lay exit. Is that going to be taken off the interstate?
It will be a full interchange on the interstate after the reconstruction, so you will have access.
Right now, we just put a bike trail under...
There's no doubt it will be a full interchange. The location of the interchange has not been confirmed yet, but it will be a full interchange. From all the discussion we've had with HDR, it will be at 40th Street.
I'm just kind of worrying because in early 1970, we're going back a long ways. The council and everything else, we tore down our Council Bluffs downtown, two blocks away, it's the Omni Center now, and it was, I think, one of the biggest mistakes that we made, that's my opinion. But we need office space. I can see the office spaces down there and everything else. I think that's a great plan and apartments and everything else, but are we, have people committed to build these towers at this time?
I believe we have a commitment on one of the office buildings, and we have a commitment on the apartments.
Just apartments, but the condominiums, the towers, we don't have no commitment on that or the rest of it.
They mentioned this afternoon that this will, this project will go in phases, and so with the office building being first, the apartment second, I mean, everything's going to phase in.
I'm all for the office buildings and the parking garage and everything else, and I know the apartments, where the pool, showing, I think, where the pool is in front of stuff, I'm for that. I'm 100% for that and stuff, and it sounds like we got people ready for that part, for the one building and maybe the apartments, but all the rest, we don't know. So, are we going to bring up bonds on this for the city or anything else? I just don't want to be caught like we did before in 1970.
Well, one, you're not going to tear anything down because there's nothing there now, so it's a little different than the scenario that you're given. But there will be some costs to the city to put in the infrastructure that proposed Avenue A.
Well, the infrastructure, that's part of development and stuff like that, I can see that, but I don't want the city to go down there and put in two, something that eventually might not even get development, might still be green space, like the towers, they might not ever show. We don't know if we got people and how much, you've got to remember, the price of those, what it's going to cost to live in one of those towers and what the buy-in and everything else. Is it going to be above the income of the people in Council Bluffs? See?
They're not proposed, the developer hasn't made a proposal yet, so I can't answer that question.
That's what I meant, that's what I want everybody to look into and stuff like that. You can propose and everything else, but what is truly going to be down there? Love the idea of the office.
Well, and you raise up a great point, and it also extends to the office space because we don't have any guarantees of occupancy. We have guarantees that they're going to be built, but not necessarily occupied. And all right, we have at least one entity that has indicated that it wants to leave the downtown area in order to move down there, so I have a secondary concern about, are we further condemning the downtown area to deterioration in order to build another project on the river? I'm really concerned about the downtown area, I truly am.
Okay. And then I was going to ask, there wasn't...
You've got five minutes, Bruce.
Okay. Is the levee system around this area up to code and everything else before we get down into it?
The city's entire levee system needs to be looked at.
I don't know if you...
The city went back in March to Des Moines and qualified for a flood mitigation grant, which would allow us to use the state's incremental increase in the 5% sales tax. This year alone, it's projected to be 700,000 in one cent sales tax that the city would bring in an increase. So, if you do the five cents, you're looking at three and a half million in just the first year. It's about a $50 million cost, and so that's over 10 years. But a big majority of that gets paid for with the flood mitigation with about 20 million, and this is in combination with Indian Creek, 20 million coming from local sales tax or bonding or however the council decides to... sales tax or bonding or however the council decides to finance that, over twenty years. So it's about a million a year.
Okay, and then one of my other questions is, I'm reading the paper.
Run that loaded because it, I wanna be clear, it's more expensive.
Talk to the University of Iowa on their floodplain project that they're doing. You, you seen the, what they had in the paper and everything? I know most of those on the Mississippi.
Well, there is, there is between Iowa State and University of Braskett-Lincoln in conjunction with the Back to River Organization. They, they've done a lot of work.
Cause I, they're, they're bringing a floodplain map up to schedule and all that stuff like that, and I just.
FEMA does, FEMA does the flood maps, Bruce, and I think your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's five minutes, and you've been up there ten, so.
The one, if I may, the, the one thing, uh, you certainly won't find anyone who is against seventeen, nineteen seventies urban renewal more than me. He really won't. Uh, I, I am a great believer in, uh, traditional streetscape and just, just because it's new doesn't mean it's better, particularly, I have no idea, I don't remember the nineteen seventies, I was barely here for them, but I don't know what happened in that decade.
I don't remember them, and I was there.
But, but the architecture, I just don't know what everyone was thinking, apologies. But, but the thing is about this is this, again, takes the best of the past and, you know, it, it's important to remember, we, we've got to, we've got to pick what, what we think and, and be consistent. We, I, I really don't think on one hand we can say we're against any government assistance or in, in many cases against any government assistance. And by that, I mean you and I rebating back an increase in taxes that wouldn't otherwise be made. But that is, that is a government, I concede, that is an incentive. We can't say we're against that, I don't believe. And at the ta- same time then say, go in there and tell the private developers who are bearing all the cost risk, if this doesn't work, you and I as taxpayers aren't out anything because we're not the ones building it, we're not care- bearing the risk of filling it out with tenants or finding contractors to build the houses. We don't have any of that cost. You know, the worst thing that happens is I suppose they don't do it and they walk away, and then all the things they've already built, we get as a gift. I mean, that's not a great situation, but it's not, it hasn't cost us anything. Uh, the alternative is to do nothing, and then the answer guaranteed is, nothing will happen. And, you know, so when you look at this, so I think we have to be careful. I, I, I don't, speaking for myself, I don't see it as the proper rule of, of the government to say, "The building must go here, or you must convince me that you have enough tenants, or I must tell you what type of trim you must use down to the nth degree." And, and at the same time claim to be for limited government. I think we, we have to do, we have to, we have to look at this as it is, which is the developers bearing all the cost risk. And if it fails, it costs the city nothing. If it succeeds, well, for ten years or so, the increase in taxes that we wouldn't have got anyway, they get back and then for all of time afterwards, you and I are paying for the roads, uh, or they're paying their taxes, excuse me, and I, I went a little ahead myself. As for the road Avenue A, you know, in most of the ti- the time, especially those of us, the majority of us who live in overpasses of town, the roads weren't built by developers because that isn't how we built things then. You just built your house generally. That's certainly the way in my street and most streets. So, you know, we all pay, when, when you build a house in town, you're on a road or the city, that is, all of us pay to put the road there. So it doesn't seem too much to ask for the main road that connects the public to the park through what'll be private ground otherwise, because they'll pay for it, just like you or I would. It doesn't seem unfair. It's going to be a public road. So I, 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 I understand the concerns, but at the same time, I think, I think we have to look at the big picture and realize the alternative really is to do nothing.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Nay.
Resolution fourteen dash two eight six, writing preliminary plan approval for a three hundred and eighty-eight lot residential subdivision, being part of the southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section thirty-two dash seventy-five dash four-three, part of the west half, southwest quarter, section thirty-three dash seven-five dash four-three, part of the east half, northeast quarter, section five dash seven-four dash four-three, and part of the west half, northwest quarter, section four dash seven-four dash four-three, to be known as Greenview Estates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
We heard some great discussion this afternoon during the, the study session with regard to, uh, concerns about drainage, and, and I think that the, uh, the, the city and the developers have, have done a good job of, of taking a look at that. And, uh, and hopefully the, those concerns will, will be, uh, mitigated to, to a substantial effect by, uh, by, by the plans. Uh, I'm a little bit more concerned about the, the traffic flow in and out of the area. If, if you happen to live anywhere, uh, in a place where you make frequent use of, uh, of, uh, Greenview or Valley View or even Franklin, uh, you're about to, uh, get a lot more traffic on, on those roads. And, uh, and we need to think about the ingress and egress long-term out of, out of that area. I know we're, we're looking forward to a potential, uh, bypass at some point, uh, going out to, uh, to the east and, and, uh, hopefully that will mitigate the situation somewhat. But again, this is speculation on what the future holds and whether or not the funding is going to, to hold up, so, uh, so if you live along those roads, be, uh, be forewarned, your commute's gonna become a little bit more complicated.
And I just wanted to remind you of kind of the rules of order here, because some of you are new here and haven't been here. Uh, public hearings, you get ten minutes to speak. Non-public hearings, you get five minutes to speak. And if you could give your name and address for the record so that we can get it down, it'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Cindy Collier-Kepin, and I live at two oh one seven four Victoria Drive in the Willshire Heights addition. And my concerns are the drainage and the water flowing. We've met with the, uh, city development last week, and we, we have met with Schwimmer, and our concerns have still not been met. And, um, they have a natural water flow up there. So if they, they say they're gonna put these sediment and holding areas to the north. Okay, everything, the waters all gonna run to the north. Okay, we have a natural water flow that comes down on, if any of you have been out there and walked, there's a natural water flow towards Franklin, comes down to Greenview. There's a concrete box there that captures some of the water. It runs through that. We used to have a swill in Robin Hills and, um, Willshire, which is now just getting eat, eaten out by all the water coming down. Also, if you wanna watch a video, we put one on YouTube on June third of this year where my rain gauge said a little over three inches. It's coming over the roads in Robin Hills from the water flow. Okay, the natural water flow up towards Franklin through this farmland was at one time, a couple of years ago, uh, diverted, water was diverted from Tweet Edition uh, under Franklin into the spill. So are we gonna have natural water flow, are we gonna have water that is diverted into us? I asked, um, the folks at Schwimmer last week if they were gonna look at the water flow at all south of Greenview. They flat out said, "No." So in ninety-nine, after Greenview Road was built, we had fourteen inches of water in our basement with that water that ran in August of that year. It's all concrete, curbed, gutted now, Greenview, when it used to be a natural road with, um, gravel, blacktop. And plus you have fields that take this water. Is any of that water gonna run off those people's houses? What are they gonna build down by the Lewis Central? Is it just gonna trap water in there? There's not gonna be any sediment, holding areas or water at that end by Greenview at all to catch or capture anything. Anyway, I would like someone from the city council, if you guys just go out and take a look at it and walk through our two additions, where older people live out there. And in Willshire, we have fifteen houses along the culvert. In that fifteen houses, there are eight, if not nine, people that are six, families that are sixty-five or older. So I just wanna bring it to your attention that we're very concerned.
You know, i- if I may, ma'am, I, I, I assure your concern that part of the difficulty is on this particular development, the plans actually call for less water to come down. The, these folks can only be responsible for the water on their ground. I appreciate the concern of the water coming from, from different directions. But on this one, there's actually gonna be less water coming down than there is now as a, as a cornfield. So, so they're actually, and part of, I, I, I don't wanna promise things we can't deliver, so to be really frank with you, we can't control the water course from the interstate or from the ground outside the city because, well, we're the city and they're not. And, and including Willshire Heights, which isn't in the city. Now, I appreciate we've got to do our, we've got to do all we can to not cause an unnatural water flow to come down to Willshire Heights. But, and I believe we're doing that, uh, to these, to the sense that there's excess coming from things that were built uh, prior to standards or, or built to standards different than the city ones, which are pretty strict compared to others.
Well, Tweet's condos when they built them. But he's the one diverted under Franklin into that field that water runs right to us. So he's in city running the county.
I, I, you know, to be honest, I'm not familiar with that, and I'd love to speak with you more about that so that I can become educated on that.
And then, uh, what is the water? Eight point eight.
Can you, can you come up and she, she can relay to you from back there. We, we need to get you on, on record, so.
Okay, we're just, we, they, they're trying to communicate with us, but they can't guarantee anything.
Okay.
But you have a natural water flow. So they're not gonna change the natural water flow, they say.
Well, actually, no, they are going to change it because instead of flowing south, which would be the normal course going downhill towards you, they're actually going to divert it north into the storm sewer system of the city, which eventually discharges into Missouri.
And what are the guarantees of that? You have a sediment holding tank in Terra Hills that was supposed to be holding water and everything, and it's of no use anymore. And it's gonna be the association that is gonna be in charge of this. So you folks are in the city and we are in the county. We, you know, we want this development to go forward. We have no problem with that. We just don't wanna be wiped out, or we will be moving in those condos or whatever you're building in that park because we won't have a choice. We are desperate for help.
I, I am familiar with the, the Terra Hills, uh, issue, and, and unlike the detention basin there where the developer, uh, out-of-state developers just thrown up his hands, didn't set up the homeowners association correctly, so there was no way to force it, this actually, under the plan, will go into the city storm sewer system, some in detention, and the current law requires it to be done.
And it's gonna guarantee all that water's gonna run uphill north. I know they're gonna do a lot of grading, but really.
Well, it'll do it as much as we can on this earth with engineers, and, and that's all we can do, to be honest. But I appreciate there is a lot of water coming down your way. This is going to make it a little bit better. It's not gonna solve all your problems.
Okay, like I told you, John, you too, if you look at that, June second, it says Council Bluffs flooding, June second, twenty fourteen, we're not talking about Orchard Road, we're talking about coming through Robin Hills and Willshire. It's on there, you can look at it, and you will not believe the force of water coming through. And any little kids in this new housing development get curious and wanna come down when we have a lot of water, you aren't gonna find them till they get to Moskita Creek.
Well, I think we, we, we learned from what happened in the past, and one thing that they brought up this afternoon is the homeowners association will have, um, covenants, rules and requirements that they must keep up, um, what, what, uh, the, the retention, um, and the drainage issues. Terra Hills, it sounds like it didn't happen. But, but this, uh, there are, um, mechanics in place to make sure that that's not repeated. So if that's any help to you.
Uh, that was one of the questions I have for the developer and wanted to be certain that it's a mandatory association, not voluntary, and that they could be held responsible if they weren't maintaining that, because we have post-water, we have post-construction stormwater, uh, ordinances in place now that's gonna require those to be maintained. They have to be maintained, and if they're not maintained, then they will be inspected, and if they're not taken care of, then they're going to have, it'll have to be actionable against the association. And that's what I was trying to get to today, was to make sure that there is somebody to hold responsible, because you're right. Terra Hills, developer's gone and there's no one to hold responsible. So, uh, I did understand with what I saw from the developer today, it, it certainly won't fix all of your problems, but they aren't probably responsible for all of them either. So, um, they're gonna take care of the best they can to reduce it for you, but it isn't gonna eliminate it. That area in Robin Hills, it kinda comes down off of Greenview and then it gets very flat very quick. And with no storm sewers and just the, the culverts and things, it's just not enough to drain that away from your street. And I don't know that this, this will help, but it's not gonna fix it. I mean, there's just things that would have to be done with permanent infrastructure that's just not in place in your neighborhoods right now. So hopefully this'll help a little with the redirection of some of that.
I, I understand your concern, uh, cause just as a matter of common sense, water doesn't ordinarily run north. So that's, that's the first flag. This will come back for, for final plat approval, so a lot more engineering questions will have to be answered at that, that point. But I think a- at that point, we do need to make sure that there are measures to make sure that the developer follows through and is held to the plans that, that are made. I, I can think of other housing developments here in town where plans for, for retention ponds and lakes have been provided for, and then not all of them were built. And we, we heard some of those homeowners just a, a few weeks ago out here complaining to us about the drainage uh, in those, in those, uh, neighborhoods with some pretty expensive houses because the, the retained ponds weren't, weren't built as, as the, the plans called for. So we need to do a better job on, on our end to make sure that those plans are clear and that the developer is, is held to those standards. You're right.
The one other thing, I, I got a lot of, uh, questions about what, what type of housing we're talking about, and I, I don't know if the camera, I'm probably not holding it steady enough, and if it can come in, but there, we're, we're definitely, again, I, I, I'm not a fan of cookie cutters, and these are not cookie cutter houses. They are, m- many of them, they're certainly, uh, more than two hundred thousand. They've got a lot of stonework, a lot of design, architectural work. And it's taking what is a cornfield and creating nearly four hundred homes, tax-paying homes, uh, to help share the costs of, of roads and of all other things. And, you know, there is a bit tricky with this development because Greenview Road, as I understand it, is, 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 uh, at that point, uh, county, uh, maintained because that's the line. And we have, we have various agreements as to, on the line, which roads each of us maintains, city versus county. And they maintain that, but under this development, there's going to be, you know, the turn lane each direction. There, there's a lot of thought, but like, like, uh, Councilmember Ringenberg said, it will come back to us with the, the really, um, specific specifics. And I encourage you strongly to take a look at that and let us know what you think. But, but I do think this, this is a fantastic, th- this is not, this is not bad housing. Um, and we desperately need good homes. We just don't have enough of them.
Any other discussion? Although, anybody else in the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two eight seven, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Kramer and Associates Incorporated for the Indian Creek Conduit Emergency Repair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two eight eight, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Erickson Construction Company Incorporated for the IPL Storm Water Outfall Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two eight nine, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Council Plus and Midstates Bank for the city's banking service requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two nine zero, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Carley Construction LLC for the nine hundred Oak Park Road Emergency Repair Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, A.D.A. and B.
Motion to approve eight A and B, all inclusive.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold same sign. Any assistance requests to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience like to address the council?
I just have a, a quick reminder to everyone, this is the last meeting that we have before, um, election day. Election day is coming up on, uh, November fourth. So please exercise your, um, your right to, to vote at the polls. Uh, I don't know how late they're open though. Eight, nine?
Is it county election or till nine?
Seven, seven AM to nine PM. That's plenty of time for you to vote on your way to work, on your lunch hour, on your way home from work. Please vote. And if you can't get to the polls, I voted early and I voted at the courthouse. And so I just encourage people to get out and vote. Even though it's midterm elections, there are important issues on the ballot. Um, you have the opportunity to vote for, uh, County Board of Supervisors, another taxing entity. Please remember to vote.
Bruce?
Bruce Kelly, eight six four McKenzie Avenue. Guess I missed the fourteen two seven nine vote.
I wasn't going to remind you.
So are you wanting, are you wanting to know what we voted?
No, I already know what you voted. And I, I just wanted to know concerns and everything else. I know I went to school board meeting. You sent a representative for the city to go to it and everything else. And they basically said, it's a done deal. Here it is and stuff like that. And you guys hadn't even voted on it yet.
You, you, for, are you talking about fourteen two seven nine?
Yep.
All, all we did was set that for public hearing. So it's two weeks, two weeks.
Okay, so I got two weeks.
You didn't miss it. Yeah, two weeks.
Regardless of anyone else may have said it isn't a done deal yet, so please come this week.
Because one of the things I'm going to tell you that happened at the school board meeting, I says, what are they going to do? Right? And you can't talk to their meetings. You got, they got a stopwatch on you. I think, what, a minute? Something like that. And they're counting down the seconds to you. That your public official says, who is responsible in case somebody gets hurt down there? And his response was, well, they'll have to either, they'll have to sue the city and the school.
Well, the first thing they teach you in law school is sue everybody and, and the judge or god will figure it out. But, but, you know, the agreement calls for the, uh, all kidding aside, the agreement calls for the, uh, school district to maintain much, much of the property.
So if there's an incident down there, that's what I worried about down there. Because you got bicycles and you got teenage kids. You know, one of those kids is going to do something, there is going to be an altercation down there and stuff. And somebody's going, and now who's going to be responsible if somebody gets hurt down there? Is it the school or is it the city?
The documents that we were provided were pretty clear that, you know, if it had to do with the school and the school was responsible, they'd be responsible. But I think that other than that, it'll be just like the other trails in Council Plus that the city has. It'd be much like park property. So, um, but the documents are in the packet online and you can kind of read those agreements, the agreements in there. And then we'll discuss it again at the public hearing. But I think the city will be responsible if it's, uh, not attributable to the school.
Well, you could see where my point is sue both. See, I never had.
That's what people tend to do. But the real question, if I may say so then, is, is it a good lawsuit against both? And that's where it starts to sort out. And, you know, if it's, if it's during the school day and it's a school incident, not a very good case against the city now, is it? I mean, they could sue, it's a free country. You can sue. I mean, it's the judge who tells you, kicks, throws that defendant out. That's, that's how our system works.
You got to remember, I, I'm railroaded and everything else. And I'm going to say, somebody says, one person can't make a difference. They're wrong.
They are.
I, I have, and my opinion has saved this city probably, I know a half million in one project. And I know Matt Walsh was on the city council when McKenzie Avenue, the road, the bottom went out. It was blacktop. It was going, they were going to re-blacktop it. It was going to cost five hundred thousand dollars. I brought up, how much is it going to cost if you pave it? What's going to cost a million dollars? When are you going to do that? Roughly seven years. All of a sudden, I think, oh, the city council put that right up to the top of the list and we got our street paved. It saved the city a half a million dollars. Then when John Roth was building from Sims to McKenzie Avenue, the planning department wanted him to put a road in and fifteen foot easements from the curb. And I'm going, you know, fifteen foot isn't a lot. And if you put a sidewalk in, you're down to eleven foot. And I go, I got a truck that's roughly, you know, eighteen foot long. I couldn't park it in my driveway. Somebody said, park it on the street. I said, okay. What about if a kid's coming down? Because you're going to have retaining walls all the way down on a big wheel. And a guy backs all of that driveway. And they go, we never thought of that. The road never got built. So, uh, we, I said, you're maintaining a road that you didn't, we didn't need. And I, you know, I got in a big argument with somebody that says, why are you doing, coming down here? Is McKenzie Avenue okay? Yep. Street's great. Why do you care about the other streets in town? I says, because I'm part of the city. And I am going to probably sometimes going to be bothering you and everything else. And no, I don't have a college degree, but I'll tell you, I have studied more rules, regulations. And the city Council Plus put me through the, the academy for the police reserve. The city paid for me to go through all that, I, and stuff. And I figured when I got out of high school, I wasn't going to be nothing. I went to work for railroad. Oh my God, did they, I got hit with federal, city, state laws. And I'm, and then you are tested regularly for all that. Now, I am gone. Now it's, you're have to be federally certified. And one of the questions I asked down there was, has the ground been checked for contamination?
That's what you asked me. And I told you, we do our due diligence. Bruce, thanks. Your five minutes is up. Um, and I just want to follow up with, uh, you on your, two weeks ago, your request for the curb on Ramell Drive. And we've got that scheduled for repairs.
And one other point clarification, the public hearing on fourteen two seventy-nine is set for the twenty-fourth day of November. Larry Foster was not going to be available for the next meetings.
Well, that's a good point. It isn't the next meeting. It's the one after the next meeting.
Anybody from the council?
Just to note that the next, uh, council meeting is set, uh, on the federal observance of, of Veterans Day. So for, uh, for any of my fellow veterans that are inclined to, uh, attend that city council meeting, please come, uh, and, uh, and wear your colors and, uh, and your decorations and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll give you some, some, uh, of the honor that you deserve.
And please attend the veterans parade, um, which, when was it, the tenth?
It's on the eighth.
Eighth of November.
I just want to briefly mention Friday being Halloween, um, you know, and it's right before the time change, I think. It's, isn't the time change this coming?
Yeah.
It, it, uh, you know, it's, it's awfully dark and, uh, we all need reminded from time to time, me included, to, to slow down, especially on the residential streets. And it's a Friday evening to boot. So just try to remember and look out for the little ones.